This meeting in order, if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I call the roll, I'm hoping that you will all indulge me, as is our custom here on occasion, we like to pay tribute to members of the community that we lost that gave of themselves in significant ways to make this community a better place. And it's with deep regret that I acknowledge the passing of Marilyn Crosby, who was a longtime volunteer, served on a number of boards and commissions, including our tax board and cemetery board of appeals, also worked elections here in Celine for many decades. Her family still resides in the area and we express our condolences to Doug and Jeff, her two sons, as well as all her grandchildren, nieces, and nephews and friends. So if you'd please join me in a moment of silence for Marilyn Crosby. Thank you very much. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gearbaugh, CO, McClellan, Mitchell, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, Parks and Rec director Scruggs is here, as well as DPW director Fordice and assessor Skoll. You do have a revised agenda in front of you to reflect the two items there, the one item, excuse me, that we discussed during our work session. It'll be motion A and motion B regarding the rec center roof. And they are enumerated precisely the way I read them just a few moments ago. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended unless there are additional changes.
So moved?
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve the agenda as amended is her second.
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Mitchell. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that, which moves us to the presentation portion of our agenda, which is the development and operation of a walking trail through the Celine Fisheries Research Station. And it's our former council colleague, Mr. Peters. And Mr. Peters, are you joined tonight by the two gentlemen in the back?
I'm Dr. Jocelyn Snouski, and I'm Mr. Dave Rhodes, and I'm both members of 5-1-C-3 Leslie Nehammer Reserve.
Is this where the former elected officials sit? You're kind of like those old guys in The Muppets, you know? Thank you for both, thank you both for being here, we appreciate it very much. Mr. Peters, thank you for your time, and on behalf of myself and all of my colleagues on the dais and colleagues at City Hall, congratulations on being the recipient of the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce Lifetime Achievement Award. Quite a distinction.
It's very helpful, man.
The floor is yours whenever you're, whenever you're ready.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just a quick presentation tonight on connecting parks. This is an issue that's very popular right now. All of our neighbors such as Chelsea, Dexter, and I've done a nice job of connecting parks with all motorized trails and walkways. And this is just sort of a starting point for Celine. I'll run this idea past the council, and next week you will get a memorandum of understanding, MOU, to review. I think we can vote on this.
Okay, John? We'll vote on it at the next meeting. So let me give you some idea of what we have in mind. I've got to put my stick in here. There we go. Now, this memorandum of understanding, an MOU, is for a walking trail through the Celine Fisheries Research Station. And it'll be a collaboration between Department of Natural Resources, DNR, it's their property, private property, belongs to them, the Friends of the Celine River, and that's our 5-1-C-3, we just formed the newly formed Leslie Nehammer Preserve, and the city of Celine. So we're going to need all three of these entities to buy into this to make it go. So what we're really trying to do here is establish a footpath across the DNR's property connecting Salt Springs Park with the Celine River Preserve. And just a simple footpath for now, like you see here, sort of a primitive trail, a nature trail with natural footing, maybe someday a crushed limestone trail, but not right away. Here's our trail systems, good view of the parks. Here you see Curtis Park, Salt Springs Park, Wilderness Park, and the new Leslie Nehammer Celine River Preserve. So, there are trails within Curtis and within Salt Springs, and beautiful trails within Wilderness, and we have trails within there. We're trying to connect these parks together so people can walk and ride between them. But the MOU you'll get, what we're talking about tonight, is strictly that part there in the blue circle. Now, it's just a trail across the DNR property. So let's go inside that blue circle, take a closer look. So there it is. Up here is Salt Springs Park, the border, here is the preserve down here, and this is the trail, right along the river, right past the DNR Fisheries. Here's a research station, here's our ponds, this is Celine Island Road right here. It's about a sixteen-foot, sixteen-hundred-foot trail from park to park, and it's basically a deer trail right now. So we just thought it'd be nice, this is our first round of trying to connect parks. The DNR is very supportive of this. We approached them with this idea, and they were very supportive. They were very happy with the fact that the former Charlie Berg property became a preserve. They have already been to Salt Springs Park and were pressed with it, and they were very supportive in this trail effort. So here's what we have in mind, just a simple path, maybe two feet with clearance on both sides, eight-foot clearance ahead. The two parks to be connected. Of course, we've got Salt Springs Park with a history walking trail, and that's our city park. As you enter the north half of the park by the treatment plant, the first thing you come through the gate, you see this nice kiosk we have here. This is a scout project that was put in about two years ago. There's a glass case with history of the park here displayed, and you start down the trail. And this is crushed granite. And you continue on down the trail. It's along the river, it's a nice view. It goes about three or four hundred feet and terminates at this area right here, and this is a split rail fence a scout put up. And hopefully, someday we get another Eagle Scout looking for a project, he can take that rail down and continue another three, four hundred feet until we get our trails complete. So here's Salt Springs Park, in the green, it's along the park. And as you all know, there's a twenty-inch sanitary line that runs the length of the park. On from, it comes from the pump station over Wilderness on up into the treatment plant. But alongside this buried sanitation line is a former construction road and maintenance road, about twelve-foot wide road. And it's overgrown right now, it has some fallen trees on it, but it can be cleaned up and someday be a nice path. Then we plan to put some additional walking paths in, and right here you would come through a walking path through the Salt Spring and exit the park to the south and start your way down to, through the DNR property. Little bit about the Leslie Nehammer Celine River Nature Preserve. This preserve is owned by York Township, and we maintain by the Friends of the Celine River, our 5-1-C-3. This is a view of the park, it's a gorgeous piece of property, it's about fifteen acres. What you're looking here is about an eight or nine acre meadow, and we were down there this past summer, and this is just full of butterflies and different wildflowers. So it's going to be a very nice park when it's done. This is the road down into the park. You would access this from Maple. You get down Celine Island Road, and you make a right on Maple, and then the first thing you come to would be the entrance to the park. And this is a road, but we don't want people driving down right now, we're going to chain up, it'd be a nice road to walk down, and someday we're going to do a little bit more maintenance on that road and make it vehicle, ready. This is a typical path through the preserve. Dave Rhodes has a tractor and a mower deck, and he is very good at maintaining these trails and keeping them open. This is our sign that goes up here in a few months. It's in my garage right now. And on the sign, we have our trails laid out, and here's a closer look at that, so you can see, so here comes Celine Island, there comes Maple. You pull in right here, go down the road, and we have a variety of different trails. If you walked all these trails, a little bit over a mile, is that right, Dave?
Right.
A little bit over a mile to walk these trails. So right about where this blue star appears, see that blue star right there? Right about there is where we'd be coming down from Salt Springs. As you know, we have procured the old Bowley Bridge from Mill Pond Park, and we intend to repurpose that, and at this point, we would cross the Coke Warner Drain, also known as Springbrook Creek, right about there. So that's the plan for that. So we just want to help people enjoy nature and the heritage of Washtenaw County, to walk along the Celine Rivers. You know, we've got a lot of new construction housing going up, and it's going to be nice to set some of this property aside for future generations. So about several weeks ago, Beckett-Rader did a work session, right here in the council chambers, and they had people talk about Salt Springs Park and other parks and brainstorm some ideas, and we took a vote on things that were important to people. And the number one thing that was important to people was park connectivity, connecting all of our parks with trails. That was, that got the most votes. History, education, paths of natural river access, preservation, these are items like parking, trails, nature paths, and access to the foyer, which is the open spot before the gate. We're working on all those. And I thought that was interesting, that this is very popular right now, and it'd be nice to get some of this started. Also, on the river access is very popular, and in our five-year plan for Parks and Rec, we have a study included to put in a canoe kayak livery probably in Curtis Park. And let me give you just a quick overview of that. Now, this has nothing to do with the MOU, this is just an FYI. But we're, the Celine River Greenway Alliance is spearheading this effort, and this would be the Celine River Trail. What we're doing is we're busy clearing out the log jams between Mylan and Celine to make it ready for canoes and kayaks. It's something that Dave Rhodes and I have been involved in. This is a boat that was given to us by Cabela's, and we have a whole crew of people go out and they work on these log jams. Most of them are the old ash trees that came down over the years. So this is what they have planned. Here comes the river between Celine and Mylan, where they're working at Mylan, working their way up and cleaning those log jams out. There's a future park planned right about here. John, is that going to be called Moreville Park?
Yes.
Moreville Park is what they're going to be? So be places to stop along the way, and we hope to, you know, attract a different demographic and give us another dimension to our parks. Again, this is something a lot of people are interested in. So if you were to canoe through Salt Springs Park, this is just a picture I took last fall of the river, it's very scenic. Here's one I took in the preserve last year. Again, it's a very, very nice ride. So that's all we're trying to do. Eventually, we'd like to connect all these parks, but right now, we're just talking about this area with the MOU. We are a first attempt at connecting parks, and I think it would be a really nice benefit for Celine and our park system to offer to folks. So, any questions?
Excellent, thank you, Jim. Gentlemen, do you want to add anything? Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Snouski? We would welcome any comments, if you have them, of course.
Yeah, Jim did an excellent job, as he always does with his presentations, but I'm here on behalf of the Leslie Nehammer Celine River Preserve, and I want to speak, as Jim did, to the importance of being able to connect these two parks and to establish clearing of the river also. We have just recently identified a place at the Celine River Preserve that would be suitable for people to pull their canoes or kayaks out and then take a little break, rest there, and then canoe on up or down the river. There are multiple municipalities involved in the preserve besides representatives from the city of Celine, which are Jim and myself, and then there's John and Frank from York Township, Taylor Jacobson from Celine Township, and Rod Hill and Martha Churchill from the city of Mylan. So there's those four groups that are involved in that. And so I would just encourage you, when you get the MOU, to look at it favorably and to move it forward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Are there questions? Mr. Snouski, do you care to make any comment?
Just very briefly.
Please.
Honorable mayor and council members, I come to you today as a retired township supervisor, so I don't speak on behalf of the township, but as a township resident, I can tell you that our Parks and Recreation people individually are all in favor of this connection. The connection makes it very logical for the use of the entire park system. Another thing that we found out in our research and attempting to get development grants is that both the state and the county favor connecting parks. And as Jim has presented to you, our belief of this connecting trail from the Salt Springs Park, well, from Curtis Park all the way down to the Celine River Preserve would be a natural phenomenon, hopefully, and eventually. I know that this York Township Parks and Recreation people are talking about a Moreville location, which will be about another ten or twelve acres, which will be a nice site on the river, which would also connect then this park area with all the way down to Mylan. So we strongly ask your support and consideration in this matter. Thank you all.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Snouski. Are there any questions for Mr. Peters or for Mr. Rhodes or Mr. Snouski? Ms. McClellan, please.
No questions, but I just wanted to give Jim an opportunity. I appreciate, I've seen this presentation, and I appreciate you coming again today. Can you speak a little bit just about, I know we have a lot of young people here today, and about the help that you might need to clear the river and anybody that's interested in helping with that perhaps?
Yeah, we're always in need of some young, strong backs. You see, a lot of us have gray hair and can't do as much as we used to do, but if anybody would like to volunteer, this is a good effort. Supervise, the people handling the chainsaws are from the county, so we don't do that. We're just labor pulling the logs and sticks out of the river and stacking them on the shoreline. But there's a lot of jams to be cleared between here and Mylan. So if anybody's looking for something to do this summer, we do have these log clearing, these log clearing jam parties about once or twice a month. I guess we do this on the weekends. So it's a great opportunity, like, don't mind getting your feet wet and working around the river, it's kind of a lot of fun.
Who do they contact?
Or they could go to the Friends of the Celine River Bicycle Page.
Okay.
Put their information.
Anything else, Ms. McClellan?
That was it.
Thank you, may I have other additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Who will maintain this property?
5-1-C-3.
You will maintain it, so?
The path, yes. We will install it, maintain it, there's no cost to the city.
There's no cost to the city?
It's, it's in city boundaries, but that's, the city's only, what they have in this, in this, it's, the property is owned by DNR, it's their private property. The 5-1-C-3 will put the path in and maintain the path, but it's within city property, in the city boundaries. The fisheries require the city, in the city limits.
Thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Jim, thank you very much, we appreciate your efforts, and we look forward to acting on this matter at our next meeting on the twentieth. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. Okay, excuse me, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess, 600 Canterbury. A couple meetings ago, the council turned down a token raise, and it was said, and I think the Celine Post and by the mayor, that you were very appreciative, but with the raises and the money not being very good, that you refused the token raise. It appears that the DPW and the police department, their contract expired June 31st of last year. And I think that it has been renewed for two years, the first year of no increases. And as the Celine Post said, because, well, that is true for the DPW and the police officers, but for staff, in 2016, July 1st, many of the staff received over a 3% increase. So that was step and grade, COLA, and if you have seniority, usually if you have seniority, you get extra vacation time, an extra personal time. But here, if you have enough seniority, you get merit increase.
Mrs. Hess, what item are you referring to on the agenda this evening?
It would be the last one, 17-43, problem?
Oh, okay, all right.
May I continue?
Please continue.
I guess I don't understand merit increases. Usually, it's for doing a very exceptional job. I looked it up in the dictionary. But here, it appears that if you have less than 10 years, merit increases a thousand, and if you have more than 11 years, it's 2,000. Now, that's for clocking in and clocking out for a period of years. I think that when the contracts are looked up for staff this year, I would hope that they will be as receptive as our DPW and our police officers were with not getting an increase this year. Thank you.
There are additional comments on agenda items? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Been moved by Mayor Protam Tahar to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman CO. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business. This is a series of two motions regarding the rec center roof. The first motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution authorizing the engagement of professional services for repair and/or replacement of the Celine Recreation Center roof and HVAC system at an amount not to exceed $46,500.
Move to permit.
Thank you, Councilmember CO, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Ms. Scruggs, I don't know if you have any comment this evening for the public record since we discussed this pretty thoroughly just moments ago, but if you do, no? Okay, very good. Mr. Campbell, nothing, I'm assuming? Okay, is there a question or comment from the dais? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I think just because we need to record it as part of this meeting too, clarification that this is basically to get an understanding of what really are all the problems in terms of the roof and potential costs that we're going to incur to try and fix the problem that is the rec roof, rec center roof, which may be a price tag from somewhere between 1.2 million and 2.1 million dollars. So we need to have something to start from, and so I'm approving this forward because I think we need to have some good ideas of what it's really going to cost us.
Thank you. Additional comments? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Tahar to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. The second will be a motion to approve or not to approve Resolution 2017-36, a resolution to purchase, acquire, and construct capital improvements, and to publish notice of intent to issue municipal securities in an amount not to exceed 2.1 million.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember CO, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Thank you. Mr. Smith, for the public record, do you want to state again a brief synopsis of this issue that it's not actually about incurring any debt, at least at this moment, that it's a legal requirement?
Right, state law imposes a legal requirement that before we issue debt, we have to issue a notice of intent to allow the public a chance to comment on that and actually to file petitions for referendum should they choose to do so, and there's a 45-day period in which to do that. This doesn't authorize the issuance of debt, that would require a bond resolution later on. It doesn't authorize undertaking the repairs or the spending of money, that would all require further council actions.
Very good. Any questions for our legal counselor staff? Any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CO, seconded by Tahar to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it, the motion carries. We move on to new business item 17-35, this is American Cancer Society Run For Your Life 5K. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the American Cancer Society's application for community events slash use of public right of ways for a Run For Your Life 5K, to acknowledge receipt of the February 14th, 2017 memo from Police Chief Rennick, the February 13th, 2017 memo, or email, excuse me, from DPW Director Fordice, and the February 16th, 2017 email from Fire Chief Heft, and to approve or not to approve the community event application and to waive or not to waive the estimated DPW fees in the amount of $100 and the estimated police fees in the amount of $449.36.
Move to approve and not waive the fees.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Ms. Rhodes, clerk Rhodes, do you care to make any comment? Make sure you get the microphone.
No, I just wanted to bring it forward so that we could have the event.
Cindy, would you care to make any comment? Oh, and this young lady over here, will we welcome you to the podium?
I'm Cindy Barnett, I'm one of the co-directors for the Run For Your Life 5K. This will be the third year that we have run. It is a run, it's not a race, so awards are not given. It is to celebrate the cancer survivors and people who have supported them throughout the years. We've had a good turnout, we hope for a better turnout this year, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Most of the races run on sidewalks, and the participants are given an hour to finish the race, and if they do not, or I say race, but run, but if they don't finish the run within that time slot, they're asked to be on the sidewalks. So we have volunteers all along the course to monitor them and to help them out.
Very good, thank you. Would you like to add anything?
My name is Lauren Wagner with the American Cancer Society. This is a wonderful event that the volunteers in the Celine area have put on. We do ask if you choose to waive, to know that that money is going to be covered by donations to the event. So anything that you can do to help us make sure that we have more money going towards our cause is wonderful, of course, we accept it.
Very good, thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioners? No? Ladies, thank you very much, appreciate your time this evening, appreciate your work on this. Any questions for staff or any subsequent discussion? No, then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan to approve and not to waive. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 17-36, this is grant request. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 28th, 2017 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, and to approve or not to approve the request to apply for the following grants, the Judy Ivan Healthy Communities Endowment Grant, the M. Parks U.S. Archery Grant, the Healthy Recreation Catalyst Award, and the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan Grant.
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Ms. Scruggs, the floor is yours.
It seems like every grant and award is due very soon. I'm, tonight I'm seeking approval to apply for these four different grants or awards. The first, the Judy Ivan, which is something not new to this community, we've applied for this every year. Approximately every five-year, we're awarded some grant money, so I'm hoping this year is the year. We'd like to apply for cardio drumming, which would be in addition to something that we offer on Saturday mornings, which is yoga in the park, but this would be a Friday night yoga drumming, free to the community out at Hennyfield. And for the mini mastodon, which is a program that we started several years ago through the Michigan Health Endowment Grant. And it seemed, it's proved to be a very great program. It's kind of a play on the real mastodon that we have during the Celtic Festival. And so we'll be applying for a $2,500 grant request for that. The Michigan, or M. Parks USA Archery Grant, this is something that is just, has just come up. They're awarding six communities a grant to start an archery program. So the award is for all the equipment, training of instructors and whatnot to get a program actually started here in Celine. So we're, we'd like to apply for that. The Healthy Recreation Catalyst Award is an opportunity to, it's for enhancing outdoor recreation. So we would like to apply for potentially putting bocce courts at Teft Park, and also for funding for the mini mastodon, depending on if we're awarded through Judy Ivan. And then the last one is the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. This was something that we became aware of, where these are not matching grants, but if we can pair a, either another grant or a project with this, we have a little bit more likelihood of receiving this. And we discussed as a staff, pairing this with the Salt Springs, the first phase of the development of that, so we would be applying for $75,000, which is pretty much their max award that they give for each community. And we'd like to use that to help develop Salt Springs Park.
Excellent.
Thank you. Let me just state for the record, I had a cardio drumming demonstration at my annual senior conference in 2016, and it surprisingly is a great work for people of all ages and all levels of expertise, so I think that would be a great addition to our Saturday morning schedule. So good for you for pursuing that. Are there questions for Director Scruggs regarding these grant requests? Ms. Dillon, and then Mr. Tahar.
On two of them, the last two, it talks about matching funds are not required, but sort of preferred. Do you have a means for matching funds?
They're not preferred, they're just, if we were to leverage something else, so for example, we're working on Salt Springs Park, starting on that first phase, we've, we're spending money on designing that, we can, we can kind of pair that together and show that we're spending money developing the park, and then this would help leverage that, that design, so we can actually implement.
Okay, so we're not at any point committing ourselves to matching funds?
No.
Okay.
None of these are matching.
Okay. And the mini mastodon, is that a pay-to-play event?
It is, currently it's a free event. We've, we've had that because it was a grant through the Michigan, what did I say, Health Endowment, that was originally funded through that, so we haven't had to charge. We would like to keep it that way. So, we've had a hundred and twenty kids come out, enjoy the mini mastodon event, which is basically an obstacle course throughout Milpon Park, kind of using the woods and the mud and the, and the water, and climbing up things, and hippity-hopping, and running down the hill, and all sorts of really cool things, and ending with a slip and slide.
Fantastic. What's the timeframe for your grants? Would you be getting them in eighteen?
The Michigan, the Judy Ivan is awarded, it's due March thirty-first, they would let people know by, I think, May, and it's available at that time. Same with the USA Archery. This one is actually, it's due in March, and they would be awarding in April. And then, the Healthy Catalyst Award is, all of these are pretty much immediate funding, so not, not two thousand eighteen, two thousand seventeen.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tahar, I believe you had a question?
Yes, thank you. About the archery grant, I wondered, do you have, do you already have a location identified or partially developed or in mind?
If it were to be indoors, we can, we can do it in the gym at the rec center. It would be solely archery at that point, that it wouldn't be open to basketball and whatnot. And we have done a little bit of investigation, talking with some of the people that are involved in the grant, whether it would, you know, hurt our floor, and it won't. The other one is, we would want to keep it at Teft Park, so that we have, we have personnel on site, and we can use the area by the woods and keep things roped off, safe, safety precautions.
Okay, yes, thank you. You answered my underlying safety question, thank you.
Safety is number one.
Indeed. Additional questions for our Parks and Rec Director? Mr. Seale?
Just a quick statement in response to Mr. Tahar's concern. I shoot in an archery league indoors in the wintertime. It's a wonderful sport. I have to travel all the way to Jackson to do this, but it's a twenty-five-yard course. It's set up indoors, and with sufficient backstop, there's no concerns whatsoever, as long as we have instructors there to make sure that the young people who are perhaps not as familiar do what they're supposed to do. So, it's a wonderful sport, and I'm glad to see you're doing this.
Well, with that being said, we are looking for two instructors to go to training if we receive the grant, so.
I don't know if I rise to instructor status, but I'll talk to you further about it.
Or you may know someone. Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions? No, any subsequent discussion? Director Scruggs, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there isn't, we'll proceed to vote then. Been properly moved by Mayor Protam Tahar, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We're obviously going to pass by the subsequent four motions because we took them in the form of one unified motion, so we proceed now to new business item seventeen dash thirty-eight. This is Project Contract seventeen dash fifty-two-nine, M.DOT Surface Transportation Program. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February twenty-third, twenty-seventeen memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve Contract Number seventeen fifty-two-nine between the Michigan Department of Transportation, M.DOT, and the City of Celine for grant funding participation of the U.S. Twelve Reconstruction Project, and to authorize or not authorize Mayor Marl and Clerk Royal to execute the contract and project resolution. Is there a motion?
I'll move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Rubel, do you want to make comment and then address whatever questions and concerns exist at the dais?
Thank you, Mayor. It's standard M.DOT agreement. We've done this almost every other year for the last probably thirty years, in order to obtain the eighty percent, eighty-one percent funding for the project that was programmed through the last three years on the state tip. And so, all the program steps have been fully completed. The project was actually bid by M.DOT last Friday, and the bids were very favorable, they were seven and a half percent under the estimate. So, things look good from the financial standpoint there. We have, so it actually would appear to be under budget, and so we would not have to probably participate in full ninety-some thousand dollars. And I did, in my memory, include the description of the project, some history, and who's involved with the construction phase.
Very good. Questions for Mr. Rubel?
Oh.
Ms. Dillon?
That's probably me, since I have a slum and just acknowledged. I just wanted to make sure that, when I read it, and I think you just answered my question, where it said that M.DOT will review the bids, but would not award the contract till after we executed the, this agreement, and I just wanted to make sure whether or not those bids were going to fluctuate and thus our liability, but you've now answered that.
Right, thank you.
So, thank you.
Additional questions? No, then we'll proceed unless there's discussion. We're simply acknowledging receipt. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve, and to authorize or not to authorize?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve and to authorize.
I'll second.
Very good. It's been properly moved by Seale, seconded by Councilman Dillon, or, excuse me, Councilman Gearbaugh. I don't know how I butchered that one, my apologies to anyone who offended. To approve and to authorize. Is there any discussion? No discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Moving on to new business item seventeen dash thirty-nine. This is twenty oh-seven LED conversion project and streetlight purchase agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March second, twenty-seventeen memo from DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve, or to approve and to authorize or not to approve, excuse me, the execution of the purchase agreement with DTE for the conversion of seventy-three high-pressure sodium streetlights to LED in the amount of thirty thousand and twelve dollars.
Move to approve and to authorize.
How about to acknowledge first?
Acknowledge, sorry, I can't read it.
No, you're good. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve and authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This will be our fourth round of LED streetlight conversions. First round was funded at about ninety-five percent by a grant from DTE. The next two rounds had significant DTE cooperation and investment. And this one, we've moved past the experimental phase, we've moved past getting rid of mercury vapor lights, so now we're just looking for streetlights that'll give us a good return on our investment. DTE's level and involvement of this is a little bit less than it has been in the past because they're not mercury vapor lights, they're not going to contribute towards the labor on these, but they will, they do qualify for their energy efficiency incentive program. So, the DTE incentives will be three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars after the project is completed, which will net us out at twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars. This project would convert seventy-three high-pressure sodium lights, sixty of which are high wattage, two hundred and fifty watt, and then thirteen of which are one hundred watt high-pressure sodium lights, being converted to LED. The savings, annual savings would be eight thousand four hundred and ten dollars, which would pay for the project in just a little over three years. The amount that we budgeted for this project is only twenty-three thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. When I put that budget together, it was a slightly smaller project of only sixty light fixtures, and then when we got into the details of this, it made sense to include another thirteen of the hundred watt fixtures, so we've got a little bit of an overrun on the budget there.
Very good. And I should have noted, you should have all received when you arrived at the dais this evening, this supplemental from Mr. Fordice, which I would encourage you to review. Provides good context for the issue that he's discussing. Are there questions for Mr. Fordice? We'll start with Mr. Seale and then move to Ms. Tahar.
So, on the map, Mr. Fordice, am I correct in assuming that the areas that are closed with red are the ones that would be replaced?
Those are the ones that would be converted to LED.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, three large groups, the north end of woodland, woodland between Maple and Wildwood Trail, and East Michigan Avenue, and then there's a couple of little outlier high-wattage fixtures that we would convert in this one as well.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protam Tahar?
Yes, I have a question about the annual savings that are projected. In the past, there have been some cases where DTE has, under different programs, of course, but has altered the rate structure so that the savings that were projected did not come to pass. Is there any danger of that here?
The rates, the rates are all subject to review by the Michigan Public Service Commission, and DTE on a fairly regular basis will propose new rates for all, you know, variety of services they provide, you know, electrical services, community lighting services. There was a, I think this was two years ago now, DTE had proposed new LED rates, that LEDs had been operating under an experimental rate, and their first proposal for formal rates was not well-received by anybody other than DTE. So, there was a coalition forum that Celine was a member of, and, you know, we had a bunch of meetings, and we, you know, testimony at the service commission, and that has been settled in a way that preserves the majority of the savings that existed under the experimental rates. So, the permanent, permanent rates have very similar savings. This projected savings here is based on the new MPSC-approved rates post that whole controversy.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else, Mr. Tahar?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dillon?
Is there a difference in the life expectancy of bulbs? Are these going to last any longer?
LEDs in general last a very long time with minimal maintenance. The fixtures that they're replacing, the high-pressure sodium ones, they actually, they have a similar lifespan, but the deterioration rate is faster with the high-pressure sodium. So, you know, a high-pressure sodium will work for thirty years, but in year thirty, it's only putting out maybe forty percent of the light it did in year one, whereas the LED in year thirty will still be putting out like eighty percent. So, you have a much more even performance, and you're using a lot less energy along the way.
And can you remind me and everyone else how you can tell which are the new lights versus the old lights? Like color?
It's color and shape. So, the high-pressure sodium ones, the light is a little bit yellower, and the vast majority of those have a glass lens that kind of bulbs down. The LED lights are, they're a wider light, and they have a flat, very flat profile on the head, and if you look directly into them, you'll see a blue dot when you look away.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions? We'll move to Mr. Gearbaugh, and then Councilwoman Mitchell.
I'm glad you're replacing the ones on Michigan Avenue, because I know there's at least three that have been out for months.
There's been a little flourish of outages along there recently, yeah.
Yeah, so I'd be glad. I don't know if you've heard, but there's been some articles and stuff about light pollution and concerns with the LEDs and everything.
Right.
So, just to put us on warning, I think we just need to be prepared for that kind of concern coming up from the public or so.
Right, there was, the American Medical Association issued a paper on the effects of blue light. So, every light source is a combination of multiple colors of light, and some LEDs are a little heavier in the blue end of the spectrum, and your phone screen is heavy in the blue end of the spectrum, and your computer monitor is heavy in the blue end of the spectrum. So, there's, there's some concerns that that blue light can disrupt sleep patterns. And in that AMA paper, you know, they, they addressed phone screens and TV screens and computer monitors, but they also talked about streetlights. And it seemed to me that, when I read the paper, it just didn't seem like there's enough exposure to the streetlights for it to make a difference, and there hasn't been an immediate big shift in the industry. So, I think within streetlights, it's not that big a deal, and also, the LEDs that are coming out now are, they're lower in the blue spectrum. So, the first ones that came out were, you know, very, very far to the white end of the spectrum, some of them had kind of a blue cast to them. A lot of people felt that felt cold. So, they're moving back towards a slightly yellower light, a little bit warmer tone, and that reduces the amount of blue light in there. But, but your point is valid.
I'm glad you're on topic, because I know there's been discussions about how it's impacting birds and how it's impacting potential wildlife and plant life and stuff like that.
Yeah, so, in terms of light pollution overall, these fixtures, the ones that we've put in so far, and the ones that are going, would go in in this round, in the general world of light pollution, that usually means the light you're projecting gets places that you didn't intend it to. These lights are very directed, they have zero up light, and, and almost all the light is directed down, a little bit sideways, whereas the old fixtures, despite having a metal cap on them, they end up throwing a lot of light up towards the sky, and that's when you get the washout of the stars, and, and those kind of, that kind of light pollution, I think, can affect migratory patterns and things like that.
The only other one thing, I don't know, since we put in the new LED lights at the corner of Henry and South Ann Arbor Street, that intersection seems darker for some reason, so I don't know if we could put a streetlight on a pole further down.
So, the new decorative lights?
Well, it seems weird that it's darker when you're getting on the other side of the intersection, so I don't know if the next streetlight is so far down that that's contributing to it, or whatever, but you might look at that, just out of curiosity. I don't think it's burned out, but it just seems darker when you go down that way.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Just for safety reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ms. Mitchell.
Hi, Mr. Fordice. I was wondering if you've had any citizen feedback regarding the lights?
I've had some informal feedback. There's a citizen that I have an ongoing friendly debate with about light colors, and, you know, I like white light, she likes yellow light, you know. So, I've had some comments about that. Some people think they're a little bit too white, and, but beyond that, you know, I've not really had any, any negative comments. I've had a couple of people say, you know, great, we're converting, you know, saving energy, but I think, I think overall, the quality of the lights are better. You know, they're, like I said before, if you look directly into it, you can get a little bit of a, of a spot in your eye, but generally, they keep getting better at controlling that glare, and I think they're, and they're much better at controlling where the light goes. So, but yeah, not a heck of a lot of feedback from the general public.
Thank you.
Additional questions for our DPW Director? Jeff, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Any subsequent discussion on the motion to, to approve the agreement with DTE for, for replacement of sodium streetlights to LED? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item seventeen dash forty. This is extension of sales agreement for six hundred North Maple Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the March first, twenty-seventeen memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the ninety-day extension for the purchase agreement of six hundred Maple Street.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Mr. Campbell, do you care to make any comment this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in reference to six hundred Maple, city-owned property that's being proposed to be redeveloped residentially. Mr. Godfrey is here from, from six hundred North Maple LLC, if there's any specific questions, but as you all may recall, the city will continue to own a partial, it's currently part of the property, where we lease property to American Tower for their cell tower, and we've been working And we've been working diligently with them to amend the current lease between American Tower and the city, and it's in reference to their access road will have to be, is going to have to be rerouted as part of the development. So in the last few weeks, I think we've seen some positive movement, and so we're very hopeful that we'll be bringing that, the staff will be bringing that to council for your consideration in the very, very near future, I hope. But at the same time, 600 North Maple LLC is continuing to move forward with, working towards getting their proper approvals from the city for the development, so they're not just waiting idly by. They are progressing with the development. So however, having said that, the current purchase agreement terms expire officially as of March 18th, and so obviously, that's not enough time. And so we're hoping that this proposed 90 days is more than enough time, but we were hoping that this would be the last time that we would come before you with the developer and staff to get this extension.
Thank you, Mr. Campell. Let me also add, and if Mr. Girbaugh, Councilmember Girbaugh wants to elaborate, I would welcome. But in addition to some of the outstanding issues that Mr. Campell addressed, Planning Commission is also working with the developer and interested parties to resolve some confusion and some outstanding issues we have with our planned unit development. And actually, this will be, as most of you will recall, the first planned unit development initiated in the city of Celine. And I think Mr. Girbaugh shares this sentiment. I think it's an ideal candidate for that type of approach. But in the words of our planner at our last Planning Commission, who's worked on PUDs for a number of decades, this is perhaps the most complex and the most multi-dimensional. So there are a number of issues to be resolved. The Planning Commission is very enthusiastic about this project. We're working with a great developer, Bill. We appreciate you being here. This will be a marvelous addition to the community. But there are some outstanding issues that we need to resolve. I'm confident that they will be resolved. And actually, I think we're going to be having a work meeting prior to our next Planning Commission meeting to consider these issues. So if any member of council would like to attend and participate in those discussions, we would welcome that. I don't know if I'm missing anything, Mr. Girbaugh, but I wanted to let everyone know that it's still progressing on the planning end as well.
No, I mean, that was the concern of the PUD, is that because it is such a new device for us, that there are some unique properties, and unique properties of this property that need to be clarified and make sure that we're following with the law. The only other thing is, I'm glad to hear we're moving forward on American Tower. That is one thing that I think on our side is what we really are struggling with, but good luck in getting them to get it done.
The other thing that I would note, and this was verbalized by the Chair of our Planning Commission, Bill Beardsley, at the last meeting, because it's the first PUD, because this is such a wonderful project to utilize that tool, we want to make sure that we're doing it right and that we're very, very thorough and consider everything very carefully. So that's the reason for the delay, but like I said, I have no hesitation in articulating tonight that we will resolve any differences and move forward on this issue.
If I could, actually, this is not related specifically to this request, but to the point of the meeting coming up, and we're calling a joint meeting between, for Planning Commission, but inviting council, and you will be getting an invitation here shortly. But the reason it's important with the PUD, there is more, City Council has, comes before City Council a couple of times. So being a new process, this would be a good opportunity to, as a tutorial as well, to help understand the process and council, what council does, how they play their part in this whole approval process in the PUD.
What date is that meeting?
The 22nd.
Please, so yeah.
Our next, so the first Planning Commission meeting in March was canceled due to a lack of business. We'll have at least two action items on the regular meeting agenda, but we'll have a work meeting specifically to discuss the PUD beginning at 6:00 PM. Any other questions or comments from the dais? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I have to apologize. Mr. Godfrey, did you care to make any comment this evening?
No, no, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to continuing to work with you, and the motion was approved unanimously. So thank you all. We move on to new business item 17-41. This is agreement for building official services. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 25th, 2017 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel to approve or not to approve the agreement for construction code enforcement agency between the city of Celine and York Charter Township. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tahar. Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any comment?
It's taken a little while for the agreement to be reviewed by attorneys on both township and city's part, as well as obtaining the township board action on this. So now this is finally before the city council. This is for Tom Toes interim services, but also can suffice for his continued use as a backup inspector in, for use whenever we need him in the future years also, as we've done in the past at least 15 years. We are in an active phase now of replacing the two positions of full-time billing inspector and code officer through the city administrator's office.
Any questions for Mr. Rubel?
I'll stop.
No?
I have a question.
Oh, please.
I'll start. I just want clarification that when he is conducting office hours here, he's only going to be doing city business, correct?
Correct.
Because there was no mention of that in the contract, it was not specified.
When, if he holds office hours here, then there's a pay per hour.
I just want to make sure that that's clarified, that that's.
He sometimes does receive calls at the township when he's not here, and so, you know, he can also bill for that. Because sometimes, you know, he is in the interim, he's only here two days a week, basically two afternoons.
Right.
But in order to serve the citizens and the contractors, they can call him there, and he just accounts for his time, similar as to the way our consultants do whenever they're engaged in site plan reviews or other reviews.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not paying him to be conducting other business.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you want to elaborate on that?
No, I think.
Okay. And are the fees that we're paying, are they being, is it offsetting the expenses of him?
Correct, correct. All of our inspectors' fees are in the fee schedule, in the building fee permit payment.
Okay. And can you just clarify what services fall under code enforcement?
He also is filling in for our, as code enforcement officer in zoning enforcement.
So we're paying him $45 an hour for code enforcement? Is that just for clarification?
Correct. For what time, what few hours he spends per week on that?
And it's purely, it's a reactionary, so if we have a, we respond, you know, to a complaint, if we can't do it with our other staff, myself included, then we would bring him on. But it's, right now, we're steady as she goes, but it's, he's not driving around being proactive and paying him the $45 an hour that way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions? Mr. Girbaugh?
So if I give you a list of all the properties with illegal signs and all kinds of yard crap sitting in the yard section, those can be enforced by this individual?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. I didn't know we had someone doing that. Thanks.
I would just elaborate until we fill the code enforcement position that is currently being advertised, along with our building inspector. We encourage council members and private citizens, business owners, to contact the Building and Engineering Department with concerns, specifically with code violations. I don't need to get on my soapbox, but code enforcement is critically important to the community's identity and character and look, and so, while I wish we could be more proactive right now, we can't. So we rely on people to reach out to staff and help inform us of violations or potential violations. Additional questions? Mr. Rubel, thank you. Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Dillon, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. How about a motion now, that carried unanimously? How about a motion now to approve or not to approve?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Seau. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Hang tight, Mr. Rubel, because we move on to new business item 17-42, DTE power line easement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 27th, 2017 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the DTE easement to relocate existing power lines at 207 Monroe Street.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Seau. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. Rubel, the floor is yours.
The brief history here is that there's a purchase agreement between, or a sales agreement between the city and Mr. Damian Farrell, who is here tonight, in case there's a question for him, for the development of 30-unit residential facility at 207 Monroe Street. Both the site plan as well as the purchase agreement include provisions about the relocation of the DTE power line that traverses the property and, of course, makes that portion of property basically unusable. So DTE has forwarded to us both the easement description as well as their standard easement document, which would, if once signed by the mayor and the clerk, would give DTE permission to put in 127-foot of a line extension that already exists in Peoples Park and run it all the way, the rest of the way to Monroe Street, rather than going north and cutting through two properties. So this is beneficial to not only two properties, but it's beneficial to Edison, too. They can have better access to maintain their facilities. And so this would fulfill the desires of both the site plan as well as serving the two properties in a more efficient way for easements.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Other questions for our city superintendent engineer? Mr. Girbaugh?
In your memo, you mentioned, has negotiated the final cost. What was the final cost to relocate?
I don't know exactly. Mr. Damian Farrell, was it his charge in the sales agreement to work out? We only had estimates prior to the final negotiations. So apparently, Mr. Farrell was able to do a little bit better in the final negotiation of actual, what an actual cost may be, rather than the original two estimates we received from DTE.
Because I know it nets against what we recover in total, so I was just curious as to what the actual cost was, considering we're going to get hit for a big dollar amount at the other one.
Mr. Farrell, do you want to come forward to the podium and comment on that? We welcome your attendance this evening. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening to all of you. We've been working pretty hard with DTE, actually, to get this resolved. I am pleased to tell you, I think you're going to get somewhere in the region of $15,000 to $20,000 more for the property than in the original estimate. It's still up in there. I've paid them in full upfront for the work. It's supposed to be done by the 31st of March. We'll see how that goes. We had a very good meeting last Friday with them, but as things sit right now, we actually worked pretty hard with them to try to come up with a more efficient layout than was originally proposed at the time of the purchase agreement. But I'm pretty confident that the city is going to end up benefiting from the work that we've done to make it more efficient, make it a better layout, and serve the projects and the properties either side in a better fashion.
Great. Thank you. Because we want to be able to use that on any other property where we're having this issue.
Additional questions for staff or for the applicant? Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate it. Damian, keep plugging away. This is an important project for our community. We're looking forward to its completion. Appreciate the update. Any subsequent discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Seau, seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. McClellan, please.
The Parks Commission, we just have a couple announcements. March 21st, there'll be a public forum, similar to what we did with council and Planning Commission, about the Salt Springs Park. That'd be at 7:00 PM on March 21st. And then coming up, just to kind of keep on your radar, Arbor Day Celebration will be April 28th, and then Park Cleanup Day at Peoples Park will be May 6th.
Very good. Which park are we cleaning up?
Peoples Park.
Peoples Park, okay. Excellent. Very good. Any other commission, committee, or task force reports? Ms. Tahar and then Councilwoman Dillon.
Yes, thank you. Two to report on. First, the Environmental Commission. I remind you once again, the e-waste recycling event will take place on April 29th. And also, the Environmental Commission is very pleased to have been identified by the Environmental Excellence Partnership Program of Washtenaw County in, as environmental excellence, and will be receiving an award at their annual awards ceremony this month. And then the Arts and Culture Committee is very, in the very delightful position of receiving currently proposals for the Art Around Celine project, and a lot have of applications or proposals have already been received. So we're looking forward to seeing those.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dillon?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the Celine Community Addiction Prevention Task Force, also known as the Drug Task Force, will be holding a forum on March 22nd at the high school auditorium. It's entitled Paths and Pitfalls. Its intended audience is middle school and high school students and their parents. And there are flyers around. If you have questions, feel free to get in touch with anyone through the high school or the middle school, or through the task force.
Thank you. Additional committee, commission, or task force reports? How about reports or other announcements? All right. Wastewater Treatment Plant Update. Mr. Skoll. And of course, I would note that we will be discussing this issue at our, at the beginning of our next council meeting, at a work session beginning at 6:00 PM.
Well, excuse me, since my last update, I'd like to inform you that Nova, the manufacturer of the filters, have been on-site. They completely rebuilt and reinforced the units. Both have been returned to service, so we're keeping an eye on them. We also received a preliminary draft report from Webster Environmental regarding the odor, and we're reviewing that and should be moving that forward.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
No? Questions for Mr. Skoll? Ms. McClellan?
Can we just repeat for the public who they would call if they have odor issues? I know I had some people ask me on Facebook last week.
Well, they can call the plant.
Okay.
Or they can call Tetra Tech. The phone number's on the website, and they will dispatch somebody to come out.
Is it on the Celine, the city of Celine website? Okay.
I have that number.
Please, if you'd like to read it for the public record.
So this is Tetra Tech, and the contact is Dave Horny, H-O-R-N-E-Y, and the phone number is 734-320-5336. And those, again, that's the Tetra Tech people, not our wastewater treatment plant.
Excellent.
So to report any odors.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Girbaugh?
And I've called that number, and Mr. Horny has been very helpful. He has a series of questions that he asks, and.
He does.
Basically, he wants your ideas of levels of smell and what you smell, feel it smells like.
Yes, it's a very exacting form, actually. It characterizes the odor, the wind direction, the time of day.
Yep, so whoever, if you do smell it, I know I've had some concerns from people in the last week or so. Please do call when you smell it.
Very good. Additional questions? Bob, thank you. Mr. Skoll? Oh, I'm sorry, please.
It's okay. It's probably for Mr. Campell. I just wanted to, following up on that, where do we sort of stand with, is anybody keeping track of how many calls we're getting?
Yes, we are.
And?
Actually, the weather's been cooperative as far as odor control. It's been fairly cool, so we haven't had many complaints in the last week or so. We haven't actually had any for the month of March yet.
Okay.
Probably change when you get to the office.
Yeah.
Mr. Skoll, can you just remind me, what exactly do they do as they're on-call? I mean, when you call them and they, you answer your question, do they immediately drive on-site and check something, or what exactly are they doing?
Yes, they do. They go to the site, they speak with the homeowner or the person calling the complaint. They'll ask them to rate the odor, rate the nature of the odor, and the gentleman. And the gentleman will also rate the odor. He'll note the wind direction and the time.
Okay.
And that'll all be used in the odor study as part of the modeling, sorry, as part of the modeling of the odor.
So, he's going to where the call is originating from?
Yes.
Where the odor is originating from, not at the treatment plant?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Skoll, thank you very much. Last up is driverless cars, and this is an issue that Councilwoman Mitchell emailed me about. And actually, it's a question or comment more for you, Mr. Smith. I don't know, Dickinson, right, if you've worked on any policies or ordinances regarding municipalities who are concerned about the future, which is likely to be driverless cars?
Not yet.
Okay. I don't know if, excuse me. Who raised their hand?
Mr. CEO.
Oh, you have?
Just for those that are interested, there's a very interesting article in this month's Consumer Reports magazine, which is their annual automobile issue, about driverless cars and about the safety issues and concerns. Of course, Consumer Reports tends to err on the side of caution in most of these issues. And it's a very insightful article. Might be a good read. And if anybody wants, I guess I could bring the magazine to City Hall and have copies.
Why don't you do that? If you want to give that to the clerk's office?
Okay, I'll be in tomorrow.
I just throw that out there because I think it was a good suggestion. And I know that communities will be tackling this issue in the future. I think it's inevitable.
My guess is the state police will be doing that as part of updates to the Michigan vehicle code and the Uniform Traffic Code. So, they generally take the lead in that. And most of our traffic-related laws are adoption. Right. We just locally codify those two things.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to, please?
So, I, my concern was especially, we have ongoing discussions about parking. And I think that this will impact that, whether positively or negatively. And so, just as we're discussing our strategic plans, I'd like that, that subject area to be included.
If you hear anything interesting, you know, keep us in the loop. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that forward, Councilwoman. If there's nothing further to be discussed under the discussion portion of the agenda, the Chair would like to entertain at this time a motion to convene into closed session to consider materially exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular, for the purposes of discussing strategy connected to, connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement. I will note that council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Is there a motion to convene?
So, moved?
Moved by Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember CEO?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon? Yes. Councilmember Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Tahar?
Yes.
And Mayor Marnold?
Yes, we are convening to closed session then at 8:47 PM.